Approving the agenda. Throw move.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Um, council workshop meeting was held Monday, January 6th. Minutes or as following. Council met at six PM. Members present were Luke Kinsmeyer, Hagenback, David, Crowley, Arms, and Hickman. Also present was Mayor Bemler, Police Chief Bob Schaefer, Public Court Director Doug Tarr, and City Manager Ron Dunn. Um, Ron and Doug handed out the documents, see below, which highlighted items in the upcoming 2015 budget to be discussed. Dunn explained these items are for discussion only, and he requests the council review and bring forth comments and suggestions for the upcoming budget discussion. Dunn and Tarr then reviewed items by department. Chief Schaefer presented police department items for discussion as well. After various discussions, the council workshop concluded at 7:21 PM. Um, now's the time for any public comic comment. I'm gonna register in advance what anybody like to discuss. Any comments? Public hearing. Uh, it being the time and place of the public hearing regards proposed resolution two 2014 dash one, reference to sale of city-owned property located in the 100th block of Federal Street North. I, Mayor Bemler, will open the public hearings at 6:03 PM. City Manager Dunn will review the details of the proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposal is, Alan Burnham has offered $1,000 to purchase, uh, the lot in the 100th block of Federal Street North. It's a vacant lot that the city owns. Um, it is adjacent to a property that Mr. Burnham owns, and he would like to, uh, buy it for expansion of his business. And, um, the legal description is south 22 feet of the east, one half, lot 1, block nine, original town of Hampton, Franklin County, Iowa. The city has owned this for a number of years. I'm not quite sure how we acquired it, but, uh, we acquired it, and it's, I guess, nice to see someone wanting to have some business on and give it back in the property tax rolls. I haven't had anybody come into City Hall with any comments for or against this, so Mayor, I would turn it back to you for if there's any other public comment.
Any public comment? If not, then we'll note that the public, uh, hearing is closing at, uh, 6:05. Uh, being no old business, uh, new business, um, I would like to, uh, my one mayoral appointment is the mayor pro temp, uh, and I, uh, would like to, uh, put forth Diane Crowley as the mayor pro temp. And I would need a motion for, uh, approval.
I would move we approve Diane Crowley as your pro temp for 2014 and 2015.
Okay. Motion by Jim, second by Steve, approve the appointment of Diane Crowley as mayor pro temp. Any discussion? Seeing none, discussion, uh, vote. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Um, these are city council appointments we need to go through. Uh, we have a list. I want to take, uh, and separate, uh, uh, three, the city treasurer, city official newspaper, city representative, alternative, North Iowa landfill, and, uh, go straight to the city attorney. Um, we've, uh, had, uh, some inquiries, sent in proposals, those type of things. Is there any, uh, any review of your packets, uh, any nomination, start discussion, or anything of that?
It looks like we have just two people who show interest. Previous attorney who was not interested and now is, and also another attorney. I would make a motion that we approve Megan Rosenberg as our new city attorney.
Second. Um, with a motion, uh, by Dick, second by Steve, uh, to appoint Megan Rosenberg as city attorney. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Um, then with the city treasurer, um, Ron Dunn, city official newspaper Hampton Chronicle, city representative of alternative in North Iowa landfill, uh, the city representative being Russell Morgan, and alternative Doug Tarr. Uh, seeing any other interest or anyone else nominating, I would take a motion to approve all three of those, uh, positions.
I would move we approve all three.
Jim, second. Steve, any discussion on that? If none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. Let's go next to the consideration of approval of transfer of proceeds of the car sale Hampton Fire Department. So I'll turn that over to, uh, City Manager Ron Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the fire department, uh, a few months ago, I expressed an interest in selling the old equipment theory that, uh, that they had, and so they sold it on eBay. It sold for $2,800. Fire Department would like to have this money transferred to them for use for purchases of equipment, and, uh, so we need council action to approve that transfer of those funds to the fire department from the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion for that.
I'd make a motion to approve to transfer the proceeds of the sale.
To the Hampton Fire Department?
The Fire Department.
Second.
So we have a motion by Diane, second by Val to approve the transfer of proceeds from the sale of the fire department, uh, to the Hampton Fire Department, um, the amount of $2,800. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passed. Um, next, uh, item is consideration of approval of revised alcohol sale licensing for rustic brew. Um, I'll try to explain this, uh, I don't see anyone here. Uh, review of the license, um, they want to take their class C down to a class B, uh, which would save them money. They might have over classified it. They will apply it into the state, uh, to approve, uh, their downgrade, ask for money back, and those type of things. I went over and talked to them yesterday, made sure that this was written in the way they wanted to do it. Uh, the state had suggested we, uh, approve it since in order to go to a higher level, we have to approve it. They suggested in order to downgrade their liquor license, we need, we should approve that too. Um, so we're looking for a motion, uh, uh, to do that.
So to downgrade the license?
To revision of the alcohol license from a C to a B class, uh, with native wine license. So that's by Val. Second, by Dick. So we've got a motion by Val and second by Dick to approve the revision of the alcohol sale licensing of rustic brew LLC, 117 First Street Northwest Hampton, Iowa, from a class C to a class B with native wine license. Any discussion on that?
The question, does that mean, are they changing anything that they're serving then, or they're discontinuing something? It just, okay.
No, it, it, everything's the same. It's just the licensing, my understanding was kind of complex, and they might have over licensed, it'll save them money. Uh, their menu is exactly the same, so it was more of, it's gonna save them some dram insurance and those type of things, so. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, uh, that passed. Uh, now we'll go to the consideration of approval of the timber sale contract with Wilson Custom Trees, Cresco, Iowa. I would refer that, uh, to the Hampton Tree Board Chair, Dick Lukensmeyer.
Two meetings ago, uh, we rejected a bid, um, on the sale of 15 trees in Hermann Park, um, because of one of the stipulations that was in that. We received only one bid, uh, in the, um, following weeks, or several conversations, um, with the owner of the company, Jeff Wilson. And yesterday, Randy Sanders and I spent, uh, about two hours with Jeff, um, reviewing that and actually identifying some other trees that would be low value, um, one of them to the city, one of them being the tree at, uh, the library that, uh, is proposed in this new contract that's in front of you, in front of you guys. That tree actually, I guess, is gonna be taken down and add another $432 if we approve it, another $432 to the city. So, um, the original trees that we looked at, that you guys, was presented to you guys, the only difference is there's one more tree that, um, had been identified after that contract was, um, was written, that being a very seriously struck by lightning. Uh, it's a very good quality tree, and it really enhanced the amount of dollars that we could get from, from the sale, so, um... Where am I gonna pick up my, you know, what's that?
It's Steve.
There you go. That's done.
Your point's clear.
That's not wrong, Val.
Yeah. Um, so what we have now in here in the park would be a total of 16 trees, uh, all of which are dead, dying, or severely damaged. Fourteen of those trees are walnut, and two of those trees are, um, burlap. Uh, and they will come in, their proposal is to come in and, uh...
Top those trees.
Not, uh, top them, get everything on the ground, and remove everything down to eight inches in diameter at their expense. They will take all that material with them. They'll also use their equipment to stack the limbs that are left for easy removal from our city crews, and if we can coordinate it, if, uh, our city crews are available on that day, they'll even load our trucks so that we can haul that directly, so, uh, they'll, they'll go even further than what they're proposing here as far as helping. So they would take everything down to eight inches, um, then we'd be responsible for moving that. We've also got the commitment from several people, several people to take those branches that are smaller than eight inches. So really, all we're gonna have to fall to our council site are the twigs, the small, small branches. Um, and the total, uh, that we would receive, that including that library tree, uh, the city would be $3,407, half of which would come to us immediately upon signing of this contract, and the half would be, uh, prior to the logging activity starting. And his goal, if we agree to this contract, they believe that they would be in town by the end of the year, which would be very good ground program, would be very good advantage of him. And then, um, and very impressed with this company, they do all the tree removal for the city of Minneapolis, and several other large cities, very professional. Sometimes we hear about loggers, there's a bit of skepticism in terms of that, but we don't have that feeling whatsoever. So we would, as a tree board, uh, like to suggest to you, as a council, to go ahead and set this contract.
Did you wanna mention number nine, uh, here to White Oak?
Yes, that's, um, one of our concerns, thank you, Ron. One of our concerns with taking that lightning struck tree that's walnut, because it is still living, but it's going to die, was, um, his proposal, Jeff's proposal, to replace that tree for us with a tree that, um, is suitable to that location. It actually, would being a different tree, it, uh, it does, uh, one of our, completes one of our goals also as far as getting new species into the area, adapting to the area, but, um, that would be a tree that would be two and a half to three and inch, three and a half inches in diameter, it would be bald, and bald and burlap, uh, rickol, and it would be possibly 12 feet tall. Uh, that tree is normally about a $300 tree, that would be included in the package. So we really are coming up with a, uh, a $3700 package. And I think that's...
Yeah?
You're responsible for any damage, as it says in the outline.
And then Jim pointed out, uh, number one, uh, to cut only 15, says 15, but then 16 are decided, the correct number is 16 trees, so we'll get that correct for the original contract.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Also, Dick, they had said something about commemorative coins made out of the trees, was that, that was the original one?
He is still willing to do that. We didn't actually have that in the pink here, but they, um, I've got a, I've got a brochure of theirs so that anybody could look at. They make, out of, uh, the tree materials that they get, they make signs, they make all type of plaques. They'll make a plaque that would say, if you wanted to do a, um, like to mount a deer head, or to make a park bench, or one thing they have done to provide fundraisers for communities is to make medallions that would be, maybe on that side right there, wooden medallions, they'd be walnut medallions, that they would, um, laser anything that we wanted on them as far as inscription on them, and communities that have been doing that have been very successful in, in, um, selling them for five dollars apiece as a fundraiser. And they would make 500 of those for us also.
Those at no cost?
At no cost. If we were successful, and many communities have been marketing all of those, they'll go ahead and make, um, more for 50 cents apiece.
This committee worked really hard, and I appreciate your all's, uh, work on that, and I think anything we can do to commemorate your hard work and promote this tree, I mean, it's, it's a phenomenal thing of what you all are doing. So, um, thank you for all the work you put into it. That committee's been phenomenal, Dick.
Well, I'd like to especially thank Randy Sanders. He's talked to most of us here, very knowledgeable, well, the tree really has its heart, and it does need to live in Hampton, so, um, he deserves a special, um, credit. So we would like to propose that we accept this contract and, and move forward. This money, by the way, would be used to do our spring plantings. East Park, we don't have final plans, we're gonna have a tree board meeting in February, but there's some need in East Park, there's more need in, in, um, Hermann Park, and, uh, what are the other, oh, if there's any input from the community, uh, or from you guys and Floris, where our attention should be, that's what we want to do. Uh, I think probably everyone has noticed that, so we've done a good job of protecting the, uh, the trees that were planted last year from the deer, they've been very, very successful. We would continue with that kind of effort.
We're looking for a motion then to approve this contract.
Can I ask one question first? Does the money from that sound vote to general fund? Is that, is that a separate case? Is general fund?
Yes.
But we would designate it for you guys to use for trees?
Uh, Stumps, St, there's a question, Stumps came up in the last meeting. Those would be removed by us at leisure, I mean at leisure, right? And we'll fit it in the schedule by our city crew with our equipment.
Do you maintain a motion? Move to approve the contract. Steve, second?
Second.
So motion by Steve, second by Diane to approve the timber sale contract with Wilson Custom Trees, Cresco, Iowa, for the removal, designate trees at Hermann Park and Hampton Public Library property. Any other discussion? Seeing none, uh, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Passed. Uh, then we'll, uh, move on to the approval of claims submitted by staff.
I move we approve the claims, as presented.
Second. Motion by Jim and second by Val to approve the claims submitted by staff, an amount of $122,093,96 cents. Any discussion on that? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Passes, thank you very much. Next would be, uh, consideration of approval of adoption of resolution 2014 dash O1, resolution approving the sale of city-owned real estate located in 100th block of Federal Street North Hampton, Iowa. Turn over the comments to City Manager Ron Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. 2014 dash 01, resolution approving the sale of city-owned real estate located in the 100th block of Federal Street North Hampton, Iowa. Whereas the city of Hampton, Iowa, is the owner of real estate located in the 100th block of Federal Street North Hampton, Iowa, described as south 22 feet of the east, one half, block one, block nine, original town of Hampton, Franklin County, Iowa. Whereas the city of Hampton proposes to accept offer agreement submitted to purchase said real estate by Alan Burnham in the amount of $1,000, with closing on or before February 28th, 2014. Whereas said offer agreement has been presented to the city of Hampton for review, for consideration and approval, and whereas notice of public hearing for proposed such sale and of date, time, place of public hearing has been published as provided by law. And whereas such public hearing was held on the date, time, and place as specified in the public notice, December 12th, 2013, at 6:00 PM in city council chambers, whereas no objections to said proposed sale were made at said public hearing, now therefore be it resolved, city of Hampton, Iowa, sell that real estate described as south 22 feet of the east, one half, block one, block nine, original town of Hampton, Franklin County, Iowa, to Alan Burnham for the sum of $1,000, with closing on or before February 28th, 2014. Be it further resolved that the city attorney prepare all legal documents necessary to facilitate said transaction, and the mayor and city manager be and hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to complete said transaction, including the deed, ground water, hazard, and preparation of value required, and perform all other acts necessary to complete the sale of said described real estate to Alan Burnham. And, uh, just a note, the public hearing was today, so, um, oh, that, that was the, excuse me, I'm confused, that was the date of the, uh, publication, sorry. Anyway, any questions?
Seeing no questions, I'll, I'll, uh, look for a motion.
I make a motion to be adopted for 2014 dash one.
Dick? Motion by Dick, second by Val to approve and adopt resolution 2014 dash O1. Any discussion on that? Seeing no discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Val?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Jay?
Aye.
And that passes. Thank you. Alan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, now we'll move to resolution 2014. Uh, this resolution establishing compensation for city attorney. Turn this over to Ron Dunn.
Thank you. 2014 dash 02, a resolution establishing compensation for city attorney, whereas chapter 20 of the Hampton Municipal Code of Ordinances, section 20.01 calls for the two-year term appointment of city attorney by the Hampton City Council, who shall receive compensation as established by resolution of the council, and whereas the Hampton City Council has made such an appointment, and whereas this appointee has submitted a request for compensation of services determined by the city council to be reasonable as follows, $125 per hour for office work and for trial work for Megan Rosenberg. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hampton City Council approves the above-listed compensation for city attorney services for the two-year term, 2014 through 2015. Thank you.
You, looking for a motion to approve that?
So move to approve the resolution.
Motion by Val, second by Steve to approve and adopt resolution 2014 O2. Um, any discussion on that? No discussion, we'll need a roll call vote. Diane?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Looking for, uh, the consent agenda, the three items, uh, through the previous minutes as drafted, uh, on Monday, December 23rd, 2013, from a regular session meeting, to schedule next regular session for Thursday, January 23rd, 2014, at 6:00 PM at city council chambers, and approval of liquor licensing, renewal at the wood cellar, 81st Street Northwest Hampton, Iowa. Looking for a motion for that.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Diane? Second. Jim? So, motion by Diane, second by Jim to approve, to approve the consent agenda of the following items that I read. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That passes. We'll proceed on to staff reports. Uh, can't, not here. Chief of Police Bob Schaefer, uh, the mayor, uh, city council and city manager. Uh, not a lot to report, uh, tonight, other than, um, we ended the year, the month of December anyway, with news, eight nuisance cars that, uh, we had, and seven of those are closed, and we still have one that's open, uh, the month of January. We have one, and, uh, I don't know which one is open. Continue that as much as you can, a little snow and a cold weather, but, uh, we see things, uh, we're trying to, and take care of it. Nothing other than, uh, our one officer is starting the academy on Monday. Nice day to start, start out your first day at the academy, the coldest day of the year, but, so, um, not sure how that's going, but hopefully this weekend they'll find that out, so, if anybody have any questions? Yes?
Um, a question was presented to me just today in regard to traffic flow at the intersection of Highway 65 and Highway 3. There are four new signs on Highway 65, all stating that, um, the right lane is for a right turn only, and there's some confusion by this citizen as to whether that applies to the, uh, traffic that's coming into the intersection, or whether it only applies to the traffic that has already passed through the intersection.
It would be my assumption, and we all know how that works, but being stout is on the north side of the intersection that it would be for the traffic that is on the north side of that intersection, not on the south side. The state DOT are the ones that put those signs in, and I am sure that they probably have whatever, you know, specifications of where, where to put those. You know, I could go and ask, uh, somebody from them about that, um, if there's some confusion, and see what they have to say, but I know that those signs are in two different spots, and I believe the reason why they do that, uh, as close as they do, is so that any traffic that happens to be in that right lane, head itself, has enough warning, they know that they have to be getting over into that left lane if they're not gonna be turning. So, I can check into it.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I want to say thank you for your creative thinking, uh, Monday night on the budgeting process and automobiles and that stuff. That's the kind of stuff we really need, uh, as we go into a budget year, is just to be thinking outside the box, thinking about how to save the community money, so I want to thank you for that, Chief.
Thank you.
Anything else for the Chief? If not, I see, uh, a fire chief came in, uh, so I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Wilk.
We've been pretty busy here lately, but, uh, right now we have 23 members on the fire department, and we've got one new member that's, uh, starting Monday, and I think we can have another application, we need to, and both of those are okay, we'll be back up to 25 members. And then we sold the car on eBay at $2,800 on it, and the cost of for selling that thing, five dollars. So, I think, I don't know if that would be pretty bad. And then, uh, so we've had four fires since December 30th, and one was, it's just dancing with me. And, so now, truck six, our main pumper truck, uh, has a problem, uh, the pump going gay, so we have to get that fixed, so we're taking that down to, uh, Ankeny on Tuesday. Otherwise, another option is, when we find this place and I, Ankeny, they can work on, we have to fix the ladder drive, and then, uh, the other one, they have to take the brown, get it scaled, so we can build the fire drums. And, uh...
Any questions? Expensive fix on that pump, or is it an expensive fix on that pump?
We have a little electric motor that's just, just gear in the transfer cage, and...
Either $60 or $30,000. Either $60 or $30,000.
Yeah.
Somewhere in between.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, for doing what you do, too. This weather is just, oh my.
Yeah, I always wait till it's cold at the start of the year.
Any other questions for the Chief, thank you for coming out tonight. Thanks, guys. Thank you. Next would be Public Force Director Doug Tark.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Obviously, everybody's been talking about whether we can hold up all departments right now with a lot of different things, water departments, if you want to approve them. You know, the sewer departments had a lot of calls over the holidays, which is pretty typical of that. People are cooking for large families, making a lot more grease is going down with the drain, but none of those issues are city-related, infrastructure issues, which I have to report. And, you know, I'm killing myself for saying this, but a lot of me, right, so, I kind of look. But other than that, you have the report that did give you a letter from a concerned citizen, I don't know who that was from or anything, I did try to address that number one on my report, basically. But if you have any questions or concerns, let me know.
Any questions? This weird weather we're having, of whether it's snowing a lot or not, it's been real tough on the guys, and I appreciate you trying to keep our budget under control and that type of stuff. So with that, I want to thank you, you're doing the best you can, trying to make the call. We send them out, we hold them, try not to go overtime, and those type of things, so thank you for that.
Randy Greif, he's still an excellent job down there, helping with those decisions as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager Ron Dunn?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. One, we, Melinda Kraby had filed a complaint with HUD against the city of Hampton, and a number of months ago, and then a few weeks ago, it was in the newspaper that she had told the newspaper that she had dropped her complaint, but the city had got an official acknowledgement from HUD. But we did receive an acknowledgement from HUD, we received a letter that states on July 16th, 2013, the Kraby case for housing discrimination complaint was filed with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under the Fair Housing Act of 1968. This is to inform you that the complainant formally withdrew this complaint on November 12th, 2013. In accordance with the complaintant's request, HUD has terminated its investigation and has administratively closed the complaint, so I just wanted to announce that. And also, the letter of understanding that the city council approved at the last council meeting, was, is a document between the city of Hampton and the union employees that outlines the details of transferring dispatching employees and corresponding benefits, was approved by the union and was signed by the union rep and hand delivered yesterday, so that is completed. Now we move forward with finalizing details of the 2080 agreement between Emergency Management Commission and the entities that will be covered by dispatching. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to council reports, Ward 1, Val?
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Ward 2, Mr. Beers?
No report.
Ward 3, Diane?
The only thing I have is I wanted to thank the volunteer fire department, going out in this bad weather, we all appreciate that.
Ward 4, Jay?
No report.
At large, Steve?
Nothing.
At large, Dick?
I just comment about the Fire Department, too. I happened to be close to the scene of one of those fires, and two of the firemen went to the burning garage and released two dogs that were padlocked, chained to the side of the garage, so, they did a nice job.
And from the mayor's report, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, going through my first council meeting. Appreciate the notes, I'm going to use the cable when not to. And I appreciate everything that's going on in our community, and we're going to take, after we adjourn, we're going to take a few minutes break, and we'll be doing our budget workshop, our public notice for the agencies presenting, so if no one else has anything else, comments or anything else, I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Jim, to adjourn this session. All in favor, we're adjourned at 6:37. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, thank you. We will adjourn at 6:33.